That work better? Yes. Whereas sexual assault is a highly stigmatized crime infecting one out of four women and one out of six men, and whereas any individual incapacitated by drugs or alcohol is rendered incapable of giving consent, making any sexual contact with that individual is a form of sexual assault, and whereas Santa Barbara has seen a 28 percent increase in reported sexual assaults involving the use of alcohol in recent years, and whereas this month Santa Barbara Rape Crisis Center aims to train owners and staff at local bars to intervene in situations that could lead to sexual assault, and whereas raising awareness of sexual assault is a critical issue in our community is a necessary first step in challenging attitudes that implicitly tolerate this behavior, and whereas for the past 40 years Santa Barbara Rape Crisis Center has been working towards eliminating sexual assault locally by providing support services to survivors and increasing the visibility of this issue through education. Now therefore, I, Greg Hart, by virtue of the authority vested in me as Mayor Protem of the City of Santa Barbara, do hereby recognize April 25th as Sexual Assault Awareness Month. And I just wanted to say that I had the opportunity to see the Hunting Grounds movie out at UCSB, and it was an incredibly moving, very powerful film. I spoke with Chief Sanchez about the potential, and Lori Gaskin at Santa Barbara City College about potentially showing the film at City College as well. I think it's really important to have as many people as possible see that. It's a very tragic, terrible story, but it's important for people to know it. With that, any comments that you'd like to make about the month? Appreciate it very much.
First of all, thank you so much to the Mayor, Mayor Protem, and the City Council for acknowledging that this is a very serious issue that affects our society. It can be really easy to think like Santa Barbara is an idyllic town, this doesn't happen here, but it is a really salient issue here. Since April's almost over, I just want to give you a quick update about what we've done this month. With the help of the Santa Barbara Police Department, I think at least some people are here, we gathered about 35 members, not only owners and managers, but also bartending staff, security of local nightlife establishments, and gave them that bystander intervention training, teaching them what they can do to intervene in situations that could potentially lead to sexual assault. And we're hoping to hold more trainings in the future, but we kind of got our foot in the door this year. It hadn't ever been done before. We also have some stuff to give away if you care to take some. We'll trade. So those are some coasters that we made as part of our campaign, and also stickers and ribbons for tomorrow, which is denim day. I don't know if any of you are familiar with this International Day of Activism, but it arose in response to a 1998 Italian Supreme Court ruling which overturned a rape conviction on the grounds that the victim's jeans were too tight, so she must have helped her rapist remove them. And this denim defense was actually acceptable in Italian court until 2008. So it's not that far back, and it is really important. The reason, I mean, the motivation behind denim day, we just encourage that everyone, you know, wear denim, wear a ribbon, a sticker, start that conversation about what consent really looks like, and that someone's clothing is not a form of consent. So, yeah. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for being here today. Mr. Casey, do we have any changes to the agenda?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. With that, we'll have public comments, and the first speaker is Tom Widrow, followed by Wanda Livernoyce.
Thank you, Mayor Protem and Councilmembers. I'm Tom Widrow. I represent City Watch. And I just wanted to comment on something that you discussed in Ordinance Committee today, the notion of private prohibitions on private well construction. I just wanted to say that we can understand the dilemma of double-dippers, people who use our water and then also dig wells, but City Watch wanted to bring to your attention that it's a lack of foresight and a lack of planning at various levels of government that have put us in this situation. People and properties need water. The question remains, what do property owners do who face bankruptcy, exorbitant fees, or even worse, they have their water restricted because governments and water districts have failed in their planning? And I really think the City Council, that we need to pay attention to what happens up in Sacramento and in Washington, DC. We once built dams in this state. We don't really build them anymore, and haven't for some time. Recently, in fact, two weeks ago, a federal fisheries agency ordered California's Bureau of Reclamation to release 15,000 acre feet, 4.8 million gallons of water from the New Maloney's Dam, so 23 fish could make it to the Pacific Ocean. And I'm not saying these are bad fish, or that we shouldn't be concerned about these fish, but when you weigh out that amount of water, which is enough for 300,000 people and their annual needs, for 300,000 people, it seems to be a mistake. The same agency did the same thing a week later, but they did it for six fish. So I think the more this council can be involved, still being environmentally friendly, but be involved with Sacramento and Washington, DC, it's very important, because we shouldn't be in the water crisis that we are today. We shouldn't have to be talking about prohibiting well construction at this point. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Widrow. Next person is Wanda Livernoyce. How do you say your last name?
Livernoy, like Illinois.
That's easy. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilpeople and Mayor Protem. In the kind of west downtown area, we really have a problem with shopping carts. They're taking a very long time in picking them up. They don't have any names on them. If the name isn't right, no one comes by to pick it up. And I don't know if I should contact, like, the Santa Barbara Beautiful or the Downtown Organization, or if you might give me an idea of what organization you think might be a good one to talk to. I would appreciate it. And then the second thing is that I would like either to know of a person in the Police Department, or even in the city, who really knows a lot about RV parking and what their restrictions are, and when that 72-hour limit begins, and how do we prove that? Because we've had some very annoying RV people in our neighborhood. Okay?
Well, I think we can get quick answers to your two questions. Mr. Casey, the first question? Shopping carts, where do we go to get?
You can go into the City Administrator's Office, and at the front desk, there's a hotline that you can call for shopping carts.
I've done that. But sometimes they still don't pick them up.
Yeah, that's the best information we have. There's a consortium that works with the grocery stores to pick up.
But see, it's not always grocery stores. Sometimes it's Staples, sometimes it's the World Market. I mean, an awful lot of stores have those markets. You might consider picking them up and holding them for ransom, or turning them, recycling them, you know? I mean, it's really, then the next day, there's a huge TV on it, you know? I mean, it's, anyway.
We can have a longer conversation about this another time.
Right.
And then, and also answer your question about the 72-hour RV parking. That takes a little more comment. In fact, you're getting a card here to help answer that question right now. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Tamara Erickson, followed by Maggie Campbell. Okay, then I grabbed the wrong item. Maggie Campbell, followed by Jeff Bard.
Good afternoon, Mayor Protem Hart, members of the City Council. And what is being passed around, I'm here today to talk about something we don't normally talk about this time of the year, and that's the Holiday Parade. As you know, our organization has produced the City of Santa Barbara's Holiday Parade for over 50 years. We have 3,500 participants, hundreds of entries, and it's not getting any less expensive to produce that parade. So we have a new fundraiser that is designed to support the parade, so we're kicking that off in two weeks, on May 16th, the evening before the car show opens. A lot of the car owners are coming to town the night before and are going to cruise onto De La Guerra Street, which we have closed. We're going to have a big community picnic, very affordably priced barbecue plate dinner tickets are for sale. I've included two tickets. I hope each of you will plan to join us that night. John Pometery will be joining us on the first band break for a little bit of an auction of some special downtown experiences. So you'll be hearing more about this. We hope that you'll go out and help promote it. Several of our businesses are sponsoring some of our community entries to actually come out and enjoy the barbecue. So if you have ideas about that and other folks that we can market and promote the event to, we would sure appreciate it. Thank you.
Very much. Sounds like a great event. Jeff Bard is the last speaker. See, not here, he's coming.
Okay, Mr. Cherry, I have two minutes. Congratulations, Mayor Hart. As you know, I have been doing advocacy and policy analysis. I was on the Shack Committee with Councilman Grant and currently work with Project Heal, promoting health awareness, education, and hygiene awareness and education, particularly amongst vulnerable populations. In that context, last week, I reported to you that my pastor associate had a child in the congregation whose parents did not believe in vaccination. And that child, last week, was in the intensive care unit, or pediatric intensive care unit, fighting for life. And I'm very pleased to report that that child is doing much better right now. Sadly, however, there are still thousands of children in this part of the country right now who are fighting off pertussis, and our only weapon against whooping cough, or whooping cough, is to get the immunization rates up. So I just wanted to provide the good news and a reminder that, you know, the price we pay for free speech is all this nonsense on the internet. And if people really heed the sage advice that's available through the Center for Disease Control, which is really dedicated public servants, they're going to find people are very diligently parsing all of the available information. And I wanted to be able to give you a little heads-up on federal rights and the importance when you write ordinances to really heed federal rights. But that will have to wait for another two minutes. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bird. That's the last public comment speaker. Now for the consent calendar. I think the clerk has items to read.
Item number three, adoption of ordinances establishing speed limits. Recommendation that Council A adopt by reading a title only an ordinance of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara amending Chapter 10.60 of the Municipal Code by revising Section 10.60.015, establishing prima facie speed limits on the certain portions of Las Pecitas Road, Cliff Drive, Cabrillo Boulevard, Bath Street, Caiarreal, Castillo Street, Chapala Street, Milpas Street, Salinas Street, State Street, and Valeria Street. And B, adopt by reading a title only an ordinance of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara amending Chapter 10.20 of the Municipal Code by revising Sections 10.20.020 and 10.20.025 pertaining to speed zoning adjacent to children's playgrounds and adding Section 10.20.040 pertaining to extended speed zoning near schools. Item number six, Tax Equity and Fiscal Responsibility Act, tougher hearing for American Baptist Homes of the West via Verde debt issuance. Recommendation that Council hold a public hearing and adopt by reading a title only a resolution of the City Council of the City of Santa Barbara approving the issuance of the California statewide communities development authority revenue bonds, Series 2015, American Baptist Homes of the West, and an aggregate principal amount not to exceed $70 million for the purpose of financing and refinancing the acquisition, construction, furnishing, and equipping of Valle Verde and certain other matters relating thereto. Item number eight, resolutions required by CalPERS for reductions to city-paid pension contributions. Recommendation that Council A adopt by reading a title only a resolution of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara for paying and reporting the value of employer-paid member contributions for sworn police officers' association employees effective June 18, 2011 through April 20, 2012. And B, adopt by reading a title only a resolution of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara for paying and reporting the value of employer-paid member contributions for sworn police officers' association employees effective April 21, 2012 through July 26, 2013. And C, adopt by reading a title only a resolution of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara amending Resolution 13-025 for paying and reporting the value of employer-paid member contributions for fire management association employees, January 11, 2014 through January 9, 2015, to reflect the corrected percentage. Item number nine, records destruction for Finance Department. Recommendation that Council adopt by reading a title only a resolution of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara relating to the destruction of records held by the Finance Department and the Accounting Administration, General Services, Risk Management, and Treasury Divisions. Item number 10, introduction of ordinance for Second Amendment to Lease Number 23,0017 between Mag Aviation and the City of Santa Barbara. Recommendation that Council introduce and subsequently adopt by reading a title only an ordinance of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara approving and authorizing the airport director to execute a second amendment to lease agreement number 23,0017 with Mag Aviation, a partnership, and the City of Santa Barbara at 1600 Cecil Cook Place at the Santa Barbara Airport, effective upon the adoption of the enabling ordinance to allow one-year waiver of the scheduled CPI rental adjustment. And item number 14, resolution adopting findings for Santa Barbara Museum of Natural History Appeal 2559, Puerta del Sol, that Council adopt by reading a title only a resolution of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara denying the appeal of Mark and Lauren Carey and upholding the decision of the Planning Commission granting an amended conditional use permit and parking modification for the Santa Barbara Museum of Natural History, 2559, Puerta del Sol.
Thank you very much. We have the public hearing to open on item six. There we have a speaker on number eight, and Councilmember Hotchkiss asked that item number 13 be pulled from consent to ask a question. Are there any other items to pull from consent? Okay, well, then we're open the public hearing on number six, which is the Tax Equity and Fiscal Responsibility Act hearing. Anyone want to speak to that item? And we'll close the public hearing. And then we have a speaker for item number eight. Mr. Widrow?
Thank you, Mayor Protem, Councilmembers. Tom Widrow, Santa Barbara City Watch. I just wanted to applaud public safety and the City Council and the City of Santa Barbara for, and public safety in general, for altering the benefit contribution that our public safety officials are making. Santa Barbara City Watch is concerned with fiscal responsibility and thereby concerned about pensions and benefits and healthcare benefits that can't be sustained by the city not over the short period nor over the long haul. I just encourage you, we've done some research and looked at other cities across the country who've done a pretty good job of managing their employee pension obligations and healthcare obligations. And the city of Sandy Springs, Georgia, if you get a chance when you go home tonight in front of your computers and Google that, and look at an article in Reason, it's basically Reason.com puts it out, and it talks about the fact they have great public services, great parks, extremely well-paid fire and police, which is great, but they have a defined benefit contribution system that allows them to sustain that level of generous pay over time. So I just thought it was a good opportunity to say, you know, we should look at ourselves not only in terms of what works in the state of California, in terms of defining those benefits for our valued public employees, but looking out across the country and see really what works best, what's most efficient, how do we attract the best talent while giving them the best pay, but also managing benefits that can sometimes end up costing us in basic public services. Thank you.
Thank you. And then item number 13, did you read that? Go ahead. Okay.
Amendment to Joint Funding Agreement with United States Geological Survey for Groundwater Modeling.
Councilmember Hotchkiss?
I wanted to take this opportunity for Mr. Hagmark to use this as a teachable moment so that people better understand how our water system really works, particularly our groundwater system.
Mayor Protem, Councilmember Hotchkiss, my name is Joshua Hagmark, Water Resources Manager. And my monthly drought updates aren't enough, we'll have to add to that. So the groundwater basins, under normal circumstances, provide about 5 percent of this community's water. It is the only source of water we really have on this side of the San Yves Mountains. So it plays a critical role. During this drought conditions, we'll be pulling significantly on our groundwater basins, asking for 20 to 30 percent of our water supply from that source. We do, unlike our neighbors, we have a very small groundwater basin. So one of the main reasons we've been modeling it is so we can maximize that yield, find out what the safe yield is of the basin, and also understand how the influence of seawater intrusion plays into that. There are currently three wells, and there's three basins, we'll start with that. There's three basins, there's the Foothill Basin, which underlies the San Roque area. There's Storage Unit One, which basically downtown sits over. And then there's Storage Unit Three, which we have the Valverde well over Hidden Valley, that area. So Valverde well, which is a non-podable well, is supplementing the recycle water system right now, and that is the only well in that storage basin. Foothill has three wells currently operating in that basin, and that groundwater basin is pretty low right now. We were using that basin to kind of manage water quality issues prior to the drought, and so it's not in the best shape. But Storage Unit One, since we've been working on the Ortega groundwater treatment plant, is full and is a great position going into this drought. And we have three wells currently online, and two slated to be online by the end of this year. City TV and water conservation staff have been working, and water distribution staff have been working on putting together a video about our groundwater basin, and it should be out in the next week or so, that kind of walks through how the groundwater basin helps meet our water supply needs during a drought.
And when we say groundwater basin, we're talking about an underground reservoir, a natural reservoir, as it were?
That is correct.
Okay, so, because sometimes we say unit number one, it sounds like we got a tank down there, but we don't. We've got just nature itself. How far down? I mean, groundwater is the responsibility or the reason for, under the underpass under Castillo being wet all the time? Is that correct?
Yes, however, we do not pool drinking water from what we consider the upper producing zone. That layer has a lot of organics and a lot of challenges with that particular water source. We actually pool from between 200 and 700 feet down, so we have these defined layers. And we have kind of an interesting situation that occurs here in Santa Barbara. We have some wells that are artesian, particularly in the lower basin. When the basin is full, water will come to the surface under, because of the pressure. Basically, these lenses, you can imagine, go up the mountains, and they back up water and provide enough pressure to actually bring the water to the surface. And so that condition was occurring a few months ago, however, we're pumping the basin now, and so that has kind of subsided. But it's a very unique circumstance, and, but we do bring our water up from quite a ways down. It does cost roughly $2 million to establish a well, each well, so they are very pricey assets that, you know, we carefully manage and try to, you know, replace as they age, but they're certainly a critical part of our infrastructure.
All right, and lastly, the way these basins are naturally filled is through filtration down from the surface, or are there internal springs that come up, if I can put it that way?
These groundwater basins are filled from rainfall coming into creeks and streams, basically what we understand about Storage Unit One. Water, in order to actually get into the lenses that we're pumping from, the water actually needs to infiltrate by the time it gets to Cottage Hospital, Oak Park area. If water doesn't get into the ground by then, that water is basically lost to our drinking water supply. So it's, we need to get water in the upper watersheds, that's where we get the advantage to our drinking water supply, our groundwater supply.
How long does this filtration process take from hitting the ground to going down? Do you know? Is there any way of knowing that?
There is. I don't know the answer to that offhand, but I'm sure we could dig that up.
Sorry, don't worry about that. Thank you very much. That's educational.
Is there a motion for the consent calendar? Oh, excuse me, Councilmember White?
Thank you. I wasn't going to mention this in the hearing, but I would appreciate obtaining a copy of the basin three, the USGS, I believe, has a report on basin three, and I'd appreciate receiving a copy of that.
Any other questions?
Motion to pass.
Is there a second? Motion made by Councilmember Hotchkiss and seconded by Councilmember White. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Thank you. Next item is a report from the Finance Committee. Councilmember Francisco?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, as you know, the Finance Committee today heard the third quarter investment report and recommended its adoption by council, as we just did. We also heard a report on projected general fund revenues, and we had a very detailed discussion of airport revenues.
Thank you. Councilmember Rouse, a report from the Ordinance Committee?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem. The Ordinance Committee met today to discuss the ordinance for the emerging provisions of private wells in areas served already by the city system, and will be forwarding that on to the full council.
Thank you. And the next item up is a report from the Police Department. Chief Sanchez?
We have a few slides and a few comments to make, and then we'll open it up for questions. Over the years, across the country, there have been some issues with regards to adding body-worn cameras on police officers. Some departments around the country have them. In our county, the Sheriff's Department is currently testing some, but other than that, no one in the county is using body-worn cameras. We've done a study, we've been doing it for a couple of months. We've received five cameras in order to conduct an infield study that will probably begin later this week, if not early next week. So I wanted to share that with you. The cost, between $600 and $900 per unit, and the estimate infrastructure is about $70,000. These are pretty small, and we're not budgeted for it currently, but we're going to be evaluating this very heavily in the following months to see if, in fact, we need to go to this piece of equipment. But I wanted to share that with the council, that that study is going on. I know a couple of you have asked me over the last year or so if we've ever thought about doing this, and we certainly have, but we're not doing a study, and one of the vendors has allowed us to take five in order to do this. So we're going to utilize it on five different employees around the department, patrol, the motor officers, and others, to test it and see if, in fact, this is something we want to go to. There are certainly other vendors, but this is one that we now have, and we're looking forward to the study. And at the next update, we'll give you a rundown as to what we think about it and what the next step will be for us. But I wanted to share that we are looking at this. We believe they're important for the community and for the Police Department, and hopefully we'll have some good news for you in the next several months after the study is completed. I'm going to turn it over to Captain Bill Marazita, who's going to talk about the long-awaited Community Service Officer Program, and I'll let him talk to that and other issues regarding his division in patrol.
Good afternoon, Mayor Protem and council. As the chief said, I'm Captain Marazita, I'm in charge of the Patrol Division for the Police Department. Wanted to give you an update on our Community Service Officer Program that we're starting right now. The current staffing goal is to have six part-time Community Service Officer positions filled. We currently have four Community Service Officer positions filled, and one more anticipated to be hired in the next two weeks. There are two of those four that are currently on Foot Patrol with our Tactical Patrol Force Officers down on State Street, currently getting training. One of those four was just hired this week, and we're getting her outfitted with uniforms and equipment, and we'll be getting started on training for her. And then one of our CSOs is currently injured but expected back at the end of May. We, as I said, we are currently providing in-house training that's occurring this week and has been occurring, and all five of the Community Service Officers, if we actually have five in place by May 11th, all five will be attending the basic police powers training class that I've been describing in the past, that's required by 832 of the Penal Code. That's a 40-hour class that occurs over two weeks, and it's a local class. So hopefully, they will all be graduated from that on May 27th. Also, in the background, we are currently in the process of changing the Municipal Code. As I've mentioned in the past, the Municipal Code change was required in order to give our CSOs the authority to cite for municipal codes. That has passed through the Ordinance Committee earlier this month, and will be going to council next month and should be passed by May 27th. So our timeline right now, currently, we have two deployed with our Tactical Patrol Force Officers. By the end of May, we expect to have all five of our CSOs downtown with full CSO authority, so to speak. We currently have 14 more applications with HR, and we expect to be conducting more interviews the beginning of June. And we're going to continue to hire in those, for those positions as vacancies come up and make sure that we keep those staffed as well as we can. Next slide. A Patrol Division update. Our injured and other officers in the Patrol Division, currently, we have 10 officers who are assigned to the Patrol Division, who are out either on an injury on an injury or for some other reason. That's a little bit higher than our average, which is typically about eight or so, but that fluctuates. Six of those 10 officers are off work altogether, and the other four are working some type of modified duty assignment or working in our dispatch center. The Patrol Division team staffing, and that's to say those officers who respond to emergency calls for service, the bulk of our patrol force, when fully staffed, would have 57 officers, and we currently have that staffed with 47 officers. So there's a significant number of vacancies there. But 47 is a number that we feel comfortable with, but as soon as that starts going lower, we're going to have to start making some tough choices on where to pull other specialized officers from other units. Other current vacancies in our specialized assignments, we're currently holding five positions vacant. Two of those positions are in our Traffic Division, one is in our Nightlife Enforcement Team, and two are in our Gang Suppression Team. But we are anticipating some more vacancies in the month of May, which are going to require some further adjustments. That's the Patrol Division update.
Councilmember Rice?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem. Captain Marazita, going right back to the CSO program, you're talking about having five known people and then a position open after that, and then 14 more that are in the process or in the interview process. Is that correct?
Mayor Pro Tem and Councilmember Rouse, that is correct. We have 14 more applications at this time, and we're continually accepting more applications.
As we fill the positions for the CSOs, and we still have maybe some viable applicants, are there other opportunities, such as the community liaisons, the yellow shirts, or other places for those folks to go in almost, I'd want to say, a holding pattern, per se, but kind of other assignments they could have so we could keep them in the mix somehow and make sure that we have the ability to backfill and keep our CSO program fully subscribed unless we get it going?
Yes. After we do our interviews, if there are viable candidates that maybe we don't have positions for available at that particular moment, we certainly will keep in contact with those people and suggest that they apply for other positions that are available on the department.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Councilmember White.
Following up on that, I was going to ask a question about the yellow shirts. Where's the yellow shirt program now?
Mayor Pro Tem, Hart, and Councilmember White, we currently have the yellow shirt program still going, and it's not fully staffed at this time. But my understanding is we will keep that program going, parallel to the CSO program for the time being.
And so how many do we have that are working now?
I believe there are four of the yellow shirts that are still out there.
And the total that's allowed is how many?
I believe it's six.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, go ahead and continue with the presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to ask the deputy chief to come up and talk about our crime stats and some brief comments about CompStat and where we are in terms of crime trends.
Good afternoon. Frank Mannix, Deputy Police Chief from the Santa Barbara Police Department. I'd like to start off with a quick overview of our violent crime specific to the last quarter, since we've given our last update. And what we're seeing is a slight increase in violent crime year-to-date. However, for the last month, it actually dropped back down a little bit. So we just saw a tiny little bump. Our five-year average is 34 violent acts per month. In January, we had 35. In February, we had a slight bump to 44, and then March, it's come back down to 34. So what we're seeing really is an overall, rather, average crime trend in that category of crime. Next slide. Looking at the specific crimes that constitute violent crime, homicide, rape, robbery, and aggravated assaults, we're seeing a very slight increase in robbery, but with an average month representing only seven robberies a month, to bump up to eight is really not statistically significant, I don't believe. Overall, however, we have seen an average in the category of aggravated assaults of 24 crimes per month. In January, we had 25; in February, 31; and in March, 24. So we see our aggravated assaults, which is that top line, that purple line, even though it looks a little higher than it has been for the previous nine months or so, it actually represents an average figure when compared to the last five years. In the category of property crime, we're seeing an increase in our year-to-date. If we look at this chart right here, these are our year-to-date values. So this would represent the first quarter for all these years. And compared to last year, the dark blue line, we're seeing a rather large increase. However, if we consider this value as compared to these other values, we'll see that what we're really experiencing is a rather average year. It's just this time, compared to the first three months of last year, it's a little bit higher. So let's take a little closer look at that. We see an average of 273 property crimes in our five-year window. In January, we had 270; in February, 228; and March, 217. So compared to our five-year average, we're actually a little lower, as I think you can see by this chart. But we are kind of concerned, why are we seeing this rather significant increase as compared to last year? So let's look at that a little closer. When we look at these categories of crime, what we're really seeing is a pretty good drop-off since January. We had a bloom in January in the areas of burglary, residential burglary, theft from vehicles. We had this little bloom here in January, but we see in the last three months, all these trend lines are moving down. So I don't believe we can attribute our increase to this category of crime. And if we look at the next category of crime, we'll see a little different value. This category is larceny or simple theft, and what we're seeing since right here, we're seeing a 60% increase since August of last year. In that value, we had 93, and last month, we had 149. So this category of crime represents a disturbing trend for us, and we've tried to do a little analysis to find out exactly why. And what we're seeing is, well, let's track back. Our five-year average is normally 132 types of crime per month in this category. And in January, we had 146; February, 136; and then March, 149. And what's disturbing about those is they're all three above our five-year average. So not only are we seeing this trend over the last several months, but in the last three months, it's continued above that five-year average. And what we believe this is attributable to is, quite frankly, a change in the law. It's last November, Prop 47 was passed, and a category of crime known as shoplifting from a building used to be a felony. If you entered a store like Nordstrom with the prior intent to commit a shoplift, you had a booster bag, and you were stealing things of that nature, that crime was a felony, and it was treated as such and prosecuted as such. And now that crime has been decriminalized to a misdemeanor. And as a result, the treatment of those offenders, they're brought to county jail. County jail is overpacked, and we are seeing repeat offenders in our shoplifting category. And I think we're going to continue to see an overall increase in this level of crime until we hit our new equilibrium, which Prop 47 has provided us.
Chief, if I could, with a repeat offender, I haven't learned the lesson, what happens the second and third time they get busted?
Depends on their criminal history. Usually, some sort of probation is what's in order. And quite frankly, with the more significant violent offenders taking up the space in prison, they're usually not incarcerated. They're given some sort of alternate program. Frequently, many of these shoplifters are stealing to support drug habits, and we are seeing increasing in our drug arrests for heroin and methamphetamine. So the theory is to treat it more of a medical problem and less of a criminal problem, but there's other problems with that. With Prop 47, all the felony possession charges for heroin and cocaine, they've all been decriminalized to misdemeanors as well. And people, quite frankly, they don't want to go to drug court if they know their liability is only to a misdemeanor charge. It was the felony charge that inspired people to go to drug court. So I think we may see some unintended consequences of Prop 47.
Can they get into a restorative program or system?
Well, the restorative policing is primarily for the dual-diagnosed, the mentally ill, who also have some sort of drug dependency, typically alcohol. And most of these people are more of a career criminal type than a homeless, mentally ill-type offender. Most of these shoplifters we're seeing, they really don't qualify for the program.
And are they younger in age, usually?
You know, that statistic I don't have.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, go ahead and continue. Thank you.
Actually, that concludes the presentation on crime stats.
I'm going to ask Captain Altavilla to come up and talk about the Investigative Division, and particularly what has been really keeping us very busy, and that's our residential burglary issues, and he's going to go over it. I know this is difficult to see where you're sitting, so I know you have it in front of you. So I'll let Captain Altavilla go ahead and make his presentation.
Mayor Pro Tem, Greg Hart, members of council, good afternoon. Alex Altavilla, I'm the Investigative Division Commander. I wanted to talk, at least from a macro perspective, kind of broadly, on a series of residential burglaries that we reported on earlier this quarter, that the community, obviously, was quite interested in. And it involved a series of burglaries which had the same method, so to speak. They ranged, right now, from a period of time from February 2nd of this year until March 13th of this year. March 13th being a good date compared to today's date. If you see the map up here, involved 26 cases total, two of which were also in the county jurisdiction. It's a complex investigation, and we do have physical evidence that links similar unsolved cases in Los Angeles from August of 2014. Ventura County has 20-plus cases, and also the two that the sheriff's jurisdiction has. We have assigned all of the cases to Detective Heather Clark, and she's in the process of working and coordinating this investigation with all our allied law enforcement jurisdictions from here all the way down to Los Angeles. This map, actually, it's updated now, but this map was actually released in a press release that Sergeant Harwood did back on March 10th. And at that particular point in time, we used a lot of saturation patrols from the patrol and the Investigative Division to go ahead and give the public another added blanket of security while we investigated these. And I do want to say that since that time, the community has done an outstanding job of, if they see something suspicious, to immediately go ahead and call us, and we're able to go ahead and stay vigilant on things that happen in these areas. So as of right now, like I said, the good date is, as of March 13th, we have not had a similar burglary in this series.
Could I ask, for public education, when you say "see something suspicious," typically, what is that? I mean, is it a moving van backing up to the house?
Councilmember Hotchkiss, that is, quite frankly, if they think something just looks out of place, we would prefer to go ahead and have the call. And they're only going to know that based on the culture, the climate of their own neighborhood. But in a lot of these cases, in this one in particular, some of the leads have come out of observations that citizens have made that, in their own small right, don't seem to be that important, but when we put it together in this larger, complex investigation, they're very important. So if they think it's suspicious in their own mind, we want to call.
I mean, does this include, like, strangers in the neighborhood or something? That seems a little intrusive, but...
There's anything that appears to be out of place, we want to go ahead and make sure that, number one, we have the ability to go out and contact that individual, look into that situation, and also make sure the public feels safe as we continue to investigate the series.
And do you have enough police on the street that we can take the time to look into something suspicious like that, as opposed to a violent crime?
Councilmember Hotchkiss, obviously, as an organization, we have to go ahead and prioritize our, you know, calls for service, depending on the priority. But we have, in my division, I have my radio on in my office all the time, and if we need additional people, and we think that it's something we should jump on right away, I know my division is ready to go out of the station at any given time. So I would, again, encourage the community to go ahead and call.
Just one follow-up on that. So if you make that call, and there is a response, will they knock on your door and say, "What did you see?" and take a report?
Councilmember Hotchkiss, it depends on the situation. That is always a possibility, that the officer may follow up, or he may have a detective follow up at some point, but that's not always going to be the case.
Thank you.
It's like that Malcolm Gladwell book, Blink, where you need to trust your intuition.
Just call.
Okay.
The other series that I'd like to go ahead and talk about briefly is, again, a coordinated effort by us and the Sheriff's Department, and it actually happened with a very alert deputy down in Carpinteria, where they came across several suspects and were able to go ahead and recover four stolen vehicles and arrest four individuals, and came up with a lot of stolen property. In that investigation, we were able to actually go ahead and clear two of our residential burglaries here in town. So that was another important series that we had investigated. And then, just real briefly, a couple of other highlights that have already been released to the media, but I think from an investigative perspective, it's important to go ahead and talk about some of the other cases we've had. One was the arrest of Ensign Lopez for murder that occurred in the 100 block of North Quarantina Street. The other was the sentencing of Pedro Bravo, who had 20 years in prison by a judge in Mexico for a 1988 Santa Barbara cold case murder. The arrest of William Mitchell in Oregon, and the global sediment that we had based on two armed bank robbers that he committed in Santa Barbara in 2005 and 2014, also up in Oregon. And then, lastly, the arrest of Terry Hornbeck. He was the gentleman that went into the bank here on 936 State Street with the red, I guess, shirt over his head, that went ahead and robbed a bank in Carpinteria, and the Sheriff's Department picked him up, and we coordinated the arrest with them. So I thought those were significant cases that we should point out this quarter.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sanchez?
I'd like to turn it over to Captain Torres, who's going to talk about training and recruitment for a couple of slides, and then the deputy chief will come up with more training and recruitment statistics we wanted to make sure we shared with you today.
Good afternoon, Mayor Pro Tem, city council members. My name is Captain Gil Torres. I'm the Division Commander of Administrative Services Division, who does, part of my responsibility is hiring for the Police Department. I'm going to give you a little update of the current status of our police officer recruitment update. We recently had four officers that graduated from the academy on Friday, April 10th, and are currently in our field training program. The officers graduated the top of their class. They did very well, and we're very proud of them. We anticipate that they'll hit patrol after training sometime in August this year. We also recently just hired four new recruits that started the academy in Ventura, started just a couple days ago, or yesterday, actually. Yeah, we had six of them. And just a little breakdown of that, because it'll mean something later. Two of them were from Santa Barbara, three of them were from Ventura County, and one was from San Luis Obispo County. And we just recently finished conducting a written and physical fitness testing in October, and we're about to get the list from HR to begin interviews. We had 173 initial candidates. We had 173 initial candidates, and out of that, there will be interviewing 93 that are still in the process. So, which, I'd like to point out, over the last three years, we've seen a 47% reduction in our applicants, you know, over the last three years, so it's pretty alarming for us. At the same time, we're seeing our openings increase while our applications are going down, so it's creating a big void. We currently have four openings, or five, excuse me, I believe, five, and in a month we'll have seven vacancies, unfilled police officer positions.
Councilmember Rouse?
Thank you. Is that a national trend?
It is, in general. I looked it up a little bit, and the economy's doing, whatever the economy's doing better, and currently, police officer positions aren't really popular. I mean, in the media, they're depicted negatively with things going around the country in Ferguson, and now you've seen Baltimore, different places in the country. So, you know, with the economy being, doing well, the high-tech industry attracting a lot of our top applicants, even here in Santa Barbara, we have a pretty, you know, there's a lot of companies here that are taking some of our top candidates, very competitive. Even amongst our local agencies, we're competing against the same people, because everybody's in the same boat. I know UCSB, they increased their department staffing after they had their shooting last year, you know, out in Isla Vista. They added, I believe, maybe 10 positions out there. So, you know, we're all competing in the same pool. Oxnard increasing the size of their department, and those are the, that's our recruiting pool from, you know, basically San Luis to Ventura County. And LAPD, they're having the same problems. I know they've, I read an article where they had allocated a million dollars to their recruitment campaign because they just can't keep it up. So I think the rest of the country, it's just a general, you know, beat a police officer, it's a difficult job. It's getting more difficult as time goes on. Continue to the next slide. With our dispatcher position, we currently have four job, four openings there. We have 79 applications came in, 52 took the written test, and the top 20 candidates are scheduled for an oral board the week of the 18th. And we also had four openings in our parking enforcement officer position, and we currently have seven in background for that position. Any questions that...
Nope, there aren't any questions. Thank you. Actually, councilmember Hotchkiss.
I guess, I'm not sure if it's Chief, Deputy Chief Mannix, or you should ask this question too, but we got a new sit-lee ordinance and a new panhandling ordinance. Are we going to do some special training on how to be sure that we're enforcing that correctly?
Oh, yeah. Part of, I'm also responsible for training, and we will issue out a training bulletin about some of the changes that are going on with that ordinance.
Say it again, I couldn't hear you.
We'll be issuing a training bulletin on the new ordinance.
Yeah, because it's, there's some different stuff here, and people have got to know what they're doing and carry out what we want in that ordinance.
Yes.
Can't just walk away anymore, where we had to before.
Right, right. We'll be issuing the training bulletin on that.
How soon, do you know?
You know, as soon as we got all the information, I'll, it could be in a week, we could have it issued.
That got to come from you, Mr. Colong?
Councilmember Hotchkiss, I'll review the training bulletin and work with the police to make sure it's correct. The ordinance goes into effect May 22nd, so we have a little bit of a window to get it ready.
Okay. Sooner the better, I think.
Now, the deputy chief, come up and hit one more slide before I make my presentation.
I just wanted to discuss this slide briefly. I know we've seen versions of this usually during budget presentation, and quite frankly, you're going to see an updated version of this slide next month when we do our budget presentation. But this slide shows our three categories of staffing that we like to track. One is our overall authorized strength, that's the number of police officers that we're authorized to hire by the budget. Council, of course, has given us permission to hire over that value by as many as four, or quite frankly, if we felt we need to, we could ask for as many as six to get us through periods of anticipated vacancy in the future. So we are aware that we have that tool available to us, but we are currently authorized at 144. Of that, we're filled presently with 139 officers, which I believe is 94%. So we have a very high current rate of filling those positions, especially compared to some of our allied agencies around us. So presently, we're doing very well. But if we look at the next category of functional strength, and these are the officers who are actually showing up to do work in the field. And what I mean by that is you take the pool of officers who are actually hired, and you subtract out the officers who are injured, the officers who are hired as trainees in the Ventura Academy, or the ones who are currently going through their field training, and then the officers who are on some sort of special deployment, through either on some sort of leave, a medical leave, a family medical leave, maternity leave. They might be utilized in the dispatch center to cover shortages there, or, as a matter of fact, if we look at this chart, which I've highlighted with the yellow bar, and it's marked on the map saying today, as of, I prepared this chart yesterday, and as of today, it's currently no longer accurate, because we just received information that one of our officers is going to be activated on military service for a year. So this, as of next month, this functional strength will go down to 117. Now, why the big gap? Because if we look at this bottom line, if we look at this green chart, which is representing these values right here, these green bars, we'll see that we were doing pretty well, and then we started to drop down, and then presently, we're lower than we have been for this last several years. And this is primarily due to the fact twofold. Number one is, we have more positions open than we're currently able to fill. And Captain Torres mentioned how we're seeing a 47% decrease in the rate of our applicants. A year ago, when we briefed council, we had two officers in the academy at that time, and we had the ability to send quite a few more. But the worst thing we could do in order to bolster our hiring is to somehow lower our standards, because that just sets the table for future problems. So we want to keep our standards high, we want to make sure we're hiring the right people, but we are seeing this challenge. Now, if we look at this, something happened right around here. What kind of happened? And when we look at actually a graph of our applicant pool, it's very interesting to track that over the last 30 months, because what we see is, right in October of 2013, a big drop-off. Six months prior, we had 304 applicants, and six months later, we had only 216 applicants. And what happened is, police departments across the country were kind of coming out of the recession, especially across the state in California, were coming out of the recession, and everybody started hiring. So the Santa Barbara Police Department was just one of many departments that was hiring, and we've been seeing a dwindling of our recruitment pool ever since. We went from 350 to 185. So we are experiencing this challenge. This is a challenge that other departments are seeing elsewhere, as Captain Torres referenced. And this is why we're beginning to see this trend of a diminishing functional strength. This is why Captain Marazita referenced the vacancies that are currently encumbered in his division, in the patrol unit and some of the team strength. We've gone through periods like this in the past, and we've traditionally used the theory of pulling from our specialty positions in order to keep our team strength well-staffed so that we can handle our calls for service in an efficient manner. That's the philosophy we've used in the past, and that's what we plan to do in the future.
Any questions?
I'm curious, if we were to look back even further, another, if we took a 20-year window and looked at this chart, what would intuitively, and I'd love to see that, actually, for the budget purposes.
You know, there's some data that is available, for example, the authorized strength, I could show you that. I couldn't show you the operational strength or the functional strength, because that changes every day. And the only reason I'm able to track this the way I can right now is because these are taken from the budget presentations, and quite frankly, no one tracked this until I started to do it during the budget presentation, so that's why I have this data so available. So I can show you the authorized strength, but I can't show you the operational or functional strength.
Okay, well, that's the critical element, unfortunately, is looking back historically. Well, I guess, just, you know, from your experience, chief's experience, is this the lowest we've ever been in the last 20 years?
I wouldn't say the lowest we've ever been. I would say that since the value, the functional strength fluctuates so much on a day-to-day basis, you have to just kind of learn how to roll with the ebb and flow of some of these shortages. For example, we have about 10 people throughout the department who are on some sort of injury or other list that keeps them from showing up, and then we have 10 people who are going through training. Six are in the academy right now, and four are just going through their field training right now. So in four months, we're going to get a shot in the arm of four officers right away. And then some of these officers who are on the injured list will most likely be returning to duty. As a matter of fact, I'm aware of several who are going to be returning to duty in the next few weeks. So you do get these kind of shifts, and these values represent a single day. They're not a yearly average, it's just a moment in time during budget presentations, and then this is as of today. So next week, we might be able to bump this up a little bit with the return of some of these officers. However, we are aware that between now and December, we anticipate some more vacancies from some scheduled longevity service retirements that have already been announced, and we're just waiting for them to happen.
That's the 115 number in December that you're talking about.
That's correct.
So does that factor in the addition of the officers that are coming through the academy as well?
It would factor in the four officers that are currently going through field training, and then also, some of the retirements that we anticipate are already on the injured list. So that's why we're not seeing such a dramatic shift, even though we plan on losing these officers and we'll be hiring more, they're already accounted for in the absence from the functional strength.
I know you're concerned about it, too. I'm sure we all are, too. And the trend, you know, the national trend that you spoke about, about the number of applications being diminished by events, is, you know, something to watch. And that's obviously a delicate balance between overhiring and not having the right number of people to do the jobs. And I noticed in some of the budget numbers, you know, the vehicle sites, the revenue from that is down, because I'm sure there are fewer motor officers in the field, and this begins to kind of spiral in consequence financially as well, too, so.
We always, we always staff the team strength so that we can handle our call-for-service workload, but it's important to remember, we created these specialty positions to make us more efficient, not less efficient. So when we have vacancies in the specialties, it does show up overall.
I think that sort of tees up the next segment of the presentation, so, thank you.
Thank you. One thing I'll add to the deputy chief's presentation is, just when you think, you know, you're catching up, you lose folks. And in the last three weeks, we've lost three officers who are lateraling to another department. So we graduated four, and three days later, we lost our third to another department outside of our county. And that's something that is not unique, it happens in all departments, where folks go back to where they came from. Some of these folks came here, doing a great job, been here a year or two, but at, you know, when they came on to become a police officer, evidently their cities weren't hiring at the time, the recession was there. So we're losing some folks as well, to laterals.
I think we did have a couple of questions. Councilmember Hotchkiss?
I wanted to go back to one thing you were saying, that essentially, the pool of candidates has shrunk because the economy proved, improved, and agencies are able to hire once again at a greater rate than they used to. Am I correct in understanding that?
I think there are market forces that are at play that are affecting the overall recruitment ability of our department.
Is that one of the ones we're talking about, when we say market forces?
Yes, that the competition for, you know, a relatively limited pool of applicants has grown.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Rouse?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Potem. Deputy Chief Mannix, correct me if I'm wrong, but in the recent years, weren't some of the positions internally that were filled by sworn's, transferred to non-sworn's, for example? I don't know if it was in dispatch, or in management, or some of those. I mean, to get our, to get our functional strength backed up, wasn't that, wasn't that part of the strategy?
That's correct. I believe it was two years ago, council authorized two additional non-sworn positions for our department, and we were able to basically spring loose two sworn officer positions and return them to patrol, essentially, to carry out their patrol missions. Those positions were in training and recruitment and in our special events coordinator. Those used to be sworn positions, now they're non-sworn. So those officers, essentially, it was a plus-two to our department in our overall strength, even though the number didn't show it.
Are there any other potentials for that, any potential opportunities out there or within your department that do that?
You know, I really, I don't believe so, and I'll tell you why. It's because Captain Torres is the captain in charge of the Administrative Services Division, and he currently has no officers working for him, because they have been moved out. He has some sergeants working for him, who do the training and recruitment and supervise other areas, but the officer positions have been rotated back.
Well, I know that talking to some of you guys offline, that this is incredibly frustrating for you, too, and it's certainly frustrating for all of us that have tried to fight and work for all the authorized positions we can get out of each other from up here, so I know we're all in the same boat here, but it is, it's discouraging to hear those numbers.
It's discouraging, but I'm optimistic we're going to keep our response times at a reasonable level with our current staffing.
Thank you.
Sanchez?
Moving along to community policing update, and it sort of goes into staffing resources, not budget resources, are the four bullet points that are up there. Over the years, we've been working, up until about a year ago, with five beat coordinators, and because of our injuries, I have removed beat coordinators back into the patrol team to answer calls for service. But, as the deputy chief was saying, other things begin to suffer, and we have this competitive strategizing, if you will, to really prioritize. And we compete with ourselves to see what is most important, and it's all important. What my goal is, is to return to the five beat coordinators, so that every part of the city has a beat coordinator. Currently, we have two, when we're lucky, and the others I've put back into patrol because of the calls-for-service priority. However, I'm wanting to go back to having the five. Part of that has to do with the Santa Barbara Regional Crime Abatement Team. It was called Sabernet, it's now Saber Cat. Cops love acronyms, so I apologize, we have acronyms for absolutely everything. But we have a, an officer who was assigned to that, who was usually assigned a couple of years, maybe three years, to a countywide task force. But I found it necessary to bring him back to our department and take him out of the county task force to address issues in our city. So he's coming back, July 1 or before. I did not make a whole bunch of people happy, but I need to make my city happy, and I need the people back here, so that's, he's coming back. In terms of the grade program, as I mentioned to you a year ago, it was a pilot program, still is. I have not eliminated the grade program in the elementary school. We're going to suspend it for the fall semester, and hopefully, go back in the spring semester when we get some of these, as the deputy chief says, those that are in training now, out. So it has not been eliminated, it's just suspended for the fall semester, and we're hoping to return back to the elementary schools in the spring semester, when we have more people back and more people hired. In terms of the school resource officer, this has been a position that has been up and down, if you will. There have been years where we did not have a high school resource officer, and then two years ago, we returned that position to Santa Barbara High School. That officer was promoted about a month ago to detective, and because of other issues, like the beat coordinators, that I want to have a beat coordinator for every beat in the city, we are not, I am not going to send, at the moment, our goal is to not, our plan, I should say, is to not have a resource officer at the high school in the fall, unless something happens in the next couple of months during the summer. Worst-case scenario is, let me back up. Currently, on the east side, I have no beat coordinator. What I'm going to do, as we're already beginning, we're going to begin doing interviews for beat coordinators, is have the east side beat coordinator also become the resource officer at the high school. That's the worst-case scenario. They will have someone, but it won't be full-time and on campus for eight to nine hours. They will have someone, but it won't be full-time and on campus for eight to nine hours. However, if things change over the summer and we can replace it full-time, we will do so. About a month ago, I gave the school superintendent and Paul and Mr. Casey and the rest of you a kind of a heads-up that this might happen. It's still at the "might happen." But we're hoping that we can resurrect it, if you will, once the fall school year starts. But for the moment, I wanted to put that out there early in case it did happen and not do it at the last minute, and I've assured the superintendent that it's still on there, it has not been eliminated, and in fact, they still may get it. But again, worst-case scenario is the east side beat coordinator make daily contacts with the high school anyway. That's the goal in terms of community policing. We've just missed a lot of things, not having five beat coordinators, such as additional neighborhood watch meetings all over the city, and we need to get back to that. We need to get back to those basics. This slide, I'm working on a project with Fighting Back, and it says, "Don't spend prom with us." Over the last couple of years, the issue that KADA has addressed, and the police department, the sheriff's department, and all the departments around the county have dealt with is underage drinking, especially around prom night, that has really become an issue. Recently, we met with the Public Utilities Commission person from Los Angeles and all of our, if you will, party bus, limousine, bus services to discuss those issues. We've had an issue or two that's very serious, where we had 14-year-olds renting party buses and bringing alcohol onto the buses. So fortunately, our vigilant officers caught that early, and we made some, we wrote some citations, and just took us back to that issue of underage drinking. So we brought a program in that I had in Marin County where we put all of our law enforcement people together in a photo. It says, "Don't spend prom with us, stay safe and smart this prom season, et cetera." These are posters that are going to, that we have already done, completed, that will be being placed starting tomorrow at all of our businesses, such as liquor stores, tuxedo shops, flower shops, for parents and young people going to the proms, to look at that just as a friendly reminder that they are underage. But the really great meeting that we had with most, if not all, of the companies that run businesses like this really went well. The person from the Public Utilities Commission, under which they are licensed, was there to remind them of their responsibilities to our community, and it worked out well. So the posters are done, and they will be, you'll see them all over the city. In fact, you'll see them all over the county. We've made about 300, and it was the money to do the photo and purchase. All 300 posters was paid for by Dave Cash and his budget at the school district, and we really appreciate their partnership in that. They will be delivered to every police department and the sheriff's department beginning tomorrow or the following day. The first prom of the year in our county is on the 29th, and that's Santa Barbara High Schools, and then the rest from there. This is just an effort to remind our community, and especially our parents, that underage drinking is obviously not acceptable, and it is, and it could be dangerous in many, many ways. So that's one thing I wanted to share with you, that we've partnered with KADA on. The last slide, just a quick update on the memorial. We're almost a third of the way there of the $60,000, and hopefully, we are pretty positive before the end of the year, the actual life-size statue will be placed in front of the police department. We are going to have a golf tournament, surprise, surprise, to raise some more funds on July 10 at Glen Annie, and so save the date for that. Again, we have contacted most, probably all except for one family of our fallen officers, some of which passed away or were killed in the line of duty in the 1920s, and they're going to be here when we unveil it. And it's going to be a very awesome and beautiful day to acknowledge them. That is our presentation, and we're open for any additional questions.
Any questions? I see Councilmember Hotchkiss has a question.
Chief, is it possible to compare our city with other cities around the country, size and services and state, whether we are relatively low in crime or high? I don't know, is it, can we do an apples-to-apples comparison, or is there such a thing?
Councilman Hotchkiss, yes, there is. It's pretty easy to do, and I can bring that to you at my next update. Especially, really, the key thing would be, and probably the most important thing, is how it's looking in the tri-county area might be better than statewide. I think in the tri-county area, we have basically the same issues, and most of the police departments, other than maybe one or two, are relatively the same size, and the city population is the same size. That would be, I think that's very doable, and I would definitely bring it to you. That's your request for the next update.
I do, anyway, because I'd like to give us a grade, and then we can know if we can, should do better, or pat ourselves on the back, or a little bit of both. Second thing I wanted to ask is, in the public light, there's been a Facebook video of an arrest that I want to make plain that I don't think you or anybody in the city should be commenting on it right now, but people should know that there is an internal investigation into that. Am I correct?
Yes, you are.
Okay, fine, let's let that lie. Thank you.
We have a number of speaker slips on this item, and actually, Councilmember Rouse has a question or comment?
Just one last thing, I would, I was at the meeting that Officer Corbett presented the issue on the party bus, and I wanted to give you credit, chief, for taking the lead on that among all those other agencies and making this happen, because you were instrumental in bringing the PUC to bear and bringing the players together. My last comment is, is that I appreciate the difficulties you guys are going through, we're doing the best we can to support you from up here. Want to encourage you, get our CSOs out there, that more than ever, those presences, they're not cops, they're not pretend cops, but they are presence. And that presence out there means a lot to this community, so whatever it takes to get our boots on the ground, please do it at all possible speed.
The CSO program is the number-one priority. We want to get them out there as soon as possible, certainly before 4th of July and Fiesta and all those things. We know how important it is to the community, to the business community, and to you, and it is the number-one priority for the department.
The first speaker is Tamara Erickson, followed by Maggie Campbell.
Good afternoon, I'm Tamara Erickson, Mayor Protem and Council. My head's spinning a little bit after listening to that, so I am not quite sure what to focus on. I want to, do want to say that I'm optimistic, for the first time downtown, good things are happening. There is a team working together of volunteers to address some of the issues compassionately of homelessness. A lot of smart people are in the room, I know you're aware of this, but I've been downtown for a long time, and I have not been optimistic, and I am. And I think we should all be encouraged by that. It's new, they're strategic and creative, and they're making, we are seeing results, and so we should be encouraged by that. One of the key components of that, however, is the CSO piece, and I understand, as an employer, it's hard to hire, I get all of the delays, I don't have an answer for that, obviously, except for just to reiterate what Councilwoman Rouse said, and to, you know, encourage anything that can speed up that process. In the meantime, if officers, and I know you're shorthanded, can, you know, we want to see more of you. We appreciate your hard work. We want to, we want your faces downtown, that makes a difference. And we can't continue with what we're doing without that piece. And so I think we are a little bit concerned that the money was approved in October, and it's now probably going to be almost a year before we see that fully staffed. Something's wrong with that. You know, I, there are a lot of reasons. We are concerned that this position is going to be used as a revolving door to move people into the police training program. That, Marionette, may not be true, I think there have been some hints of that. It's time-consuming to hire, so anything that can be done, from your urging to get people in the pool to continue to train, so we're not waiting four months, you know, to get a new person out there, if someone does rotate off, we'd appreciate. Thank you.
Thank you. Maggie Campbell, and I see that Tammy Stewart and Kate Schwab have also given you their time, so you have six minutes.
Thank you. Hopefully, I won't have to use it all. I'm Maggie Campbell, the executive director for Downtown Santa Barbara, and Mayor Protem and council members, thank you, first of all, for your leadership last year in making the funding commitment in the first place to fund and underwrite this program. I am here today to say that we are also discouraged and frustrated with how long it's taking to get this uniform presence on the street. It is helpful, and I appreciate the chief, he met on Friday afternoon, actually, and he shared with me that the CSO folks would be out on the street as soon as they got back from their May training. So we were hearing early June, and so we're encouraged by that report. The outset, from the outset, this vision for this uniform presence, as it was articulated by Councilmember Randy Rouse in conversations and public presentations over the last year and a half, it was clear that Downtown Santa Barbara needed a consistent, dependable, committed presence with uniforms to ensure appropriate behavior, protect the vitality of our district, and ensure a high-quality and safe experience for visitors, patrons, and employees. In most cities in California, the supplemental, ambassadorial presence of uniformed people are usually provided and funded privately through business improvement districts, and it's a proven model of public-private cooperation. It was where Councilmember Rouse, I believe, got the idea in the first place. So, but for a variety of reasons, that vision has changed, and it's now a real enforcement program, which is more than we could have asked for, and so we're very excited about seeing that roll out. The city of Santa Barbara is undertaking the initiative, the police department has taken ownership of it, and we were, the downtown community, and I think the city council, were promised, under this model, that it would be providing a highly visible team of uniformed personnel to be hired, trained, and working by April of this year. So, you know, we hear what the setbacks are, we are alarmed and concerned about reports of the staffing and hiring challenges within the department, and understand why the police leadership may be using this as a recruiting tool. I'm looking forward to seeing the delivery on the promise of that program, and holding the police department accountable to getting us a uniform presence as soon as possible. Why? Why is this important? I don't, with all due respect, I can't go back to 1,400 businesses and tell them that we just have to roll with the ebb and flow. This is important. State Street is the economic engine of this region. It is by far the largest single employer, it is likely the largest collector for property and sales tax, which funds the general services that benefit every citizen in this community. So our public spaces are 100 times more dense than any residential neighborhood. Our activities and our density, State Street serves as the community's living room for an estimated 5.5 million visitors annually. So the status quo, which is what was said last year, the status quo wasn't acceptable, this program is supposed to deliver on the promise of someone being in control and on the street, and we just urge you to make sure that that happens sooner rather than later. I think it's all of our responsibilities to protect this investment and ensure the ongoing success of Downtown Santa Barbara. So we need the CSO program, we need it now, and we appreciate your strong support. Thank you.
We have one more speaker slip, Tom Becker.
Law enforcement and the protection that law enforcement provides is important, but our civil rights come above that. I think it was Benjamin Franklin that said that any person who would surrender their liberty for a little bit of security deserves neither. It's okay to protest war. That's patriotic, it's not impatriotic to protest war, and it's not impatriotic to question your government and demand precise accountability from all segments of government. In fact, the demand, a person who demands it, that spark of humanity that demands that your government answer questions and prove accountability, that is the true mark of a true patriot. Some people think a true mark of a patriot is someone who just does things without question, doesn't think, obeys orders. Actually, if our founding fathers obeyed orders and didn't ask questions, we wouldn't have this country. I believe that law enforcement has a very, very vital and important position in our society. Nobody doubts that, but boy, do they need to be watched, because I want to remind everyone, if you look at the 20th century, any century, but let's look at the 20th century, the biggest criminals of the 20th century were governments that were lawful and acted within the laws of their own country. Nazi Germany, lawful, for the laws of Nazi Germany. Stalinist Soviet Union was a lawful country that acted lawfully within its own rules. I'm not saying that we're Nazi Germany, I'm not saying that we're Communist Russia or Communist China, but boy, I'll tell you, I think that the people really do have to fear government, because government has proven itself to actually be the entity that is most capable of doing the most harm. And when we really look at police and law enforcement carefully, we're preserving our own liberty as well as those of other people, and it's okay to do that, because it is the true mark of a patriot. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Becker. Are there any other questions or comments about this item? Councilmember Murillo?
Thank you. Mayor Protem Hart. So, chief, can you let us know when the investigation might be done of the video of the officer that possibly knocked a phone out of someone's hand? When that might be completed, the investigation?
No, I can't.
Can you tell us, because I do, I'm concerned about the lack of beat coordinators, but people, officers are patrolling downtown east side, west side, right? Can you tell us what's missing, because the beat coordinator isn't there? There are officers in our neighborhoods and checking in with businesses and people, right?
Thank you for asking that question, yes. You know, the officers are answering calls for service right out of the chute when they get into their police cars, and they have to deal with that, that's their priority. Our beat coordinator position is critical in Santa Barbara, because we have such a diverse community that requires a lot of attention, that may not have to do with a crime exactly, but with the quality of life issues in different communities. We've opened up at the Franklin Center, the beat coordinator office, we now have one on the west side, and thank you for reminding me of something, that beginning this summer, we will have a full-time office and a beat coordinator assigned on Santa Barbara City College property in the administration building. We're going to have a beat coordinator working out of that, which is Beat Two along the beachfront and the college. We have been given two parking spaces where officers in the field can go in there at night, meet people, take reports, and they do not have to return back to the office. The importance of the beat coordinator is really to address issues that maybe a patrol officer can't deal with because of a call for service that may be of the emergency nature. The beat coordinators are, again, are dealing with quality of life issues. They address them, they also address the issue of homelessness, mental illness, runaway juveniles, and other issues in particular communities that need attention. And those beat coordinators are really the catalyst to a lot of programs that happen because they're within each community, and that is the goal this coming next fiscal year, is to have the five. Beats Two and Three is where Officer Corbett, Casey Butel Corbett, will continue to work in the downtown corridor, and my plan is to have a beat coordinator again in each beat once again. And I think that's really critical, they play an important role, because they are the catalyst to a lot of things, quality-of-life oriented, and I think that prevents crime, and it also gives a voice for the community. We continue to have neighborhood watch meetings, we need to have more. And, of course, the Citizens Academy that the beat coordinators deal with. So I think they're critical, I believe they're very critical, and we need to get back to that basic of getting back into the community and giving the community more of a voice with a direct liaison to the police department that happens to be a sworn police officer.
Okay. And then in terms of recruiting, I remember you talking once of having hope of doing sort of an ROTC kind of program in the high schools, where local students were introduced to a law enforcement career and possibly earn credits in, you know, law enforcement career and possibly earn credits in, you know, school credits, academic credits, but it would lead them possibly to a law enforcement career with the Santa Barbara Police Department. Are you, do you need help talking to the school district to convince them to let you do that, or?
No, I don't need help, but I thank you. But we've spoken to the school district. In fact, we've spoken, we had a meeting with all the superintendents, with both of our superintendents, about a program that the city of Los Angeles had had for about 15 years, where there's a magnet school on certain campuses that address law enforcement careers for the future. The superintendents are looking at the programs. They've also met with the LA folks, but they have not made a decision as of yet. It's a huge commitment. It's a very huge commitment for the school district, and just like us, they have competing priorities as well. But what has really happened in light of that, despite that, I should say, is that our police activities league continues to grow, our leadership programs are beginning to grow. So I think the schools and the police department have a wonderful relationship. I just think with each of us having competing priorities in each of our organizations, it's tough to commit to that. But they have promised to look at it, and they are looking at it. They've received all the materials, and they were very gracious in hosting a meeting where the LA folks came to speak to them. So it's not that it's out of the realm of possibility. I just don't think it's at the top of their list, and it's not at the top of my list right now. It's something we'd love to get to, and Dave Cash and Mr. Saroni feel the same way. But again, with competing priorities, it's kind of tough for us to do. So they're very appreciative of it, and wish, and they wish they could do it. That's where we are with it.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, well, thank you very much. Appreciate the presentation from all departments.
Item number 18, Casa Esperanza Homeless Center, People Assisting the Homeless merger.
Oh, yeah. I forgot about that one. Ms. Gray, are you going to be making this presentation?
Yes.
Thank you.
Mayor Pro-Tim Hart, councilmembers, Sue Gray, Community Development Business Manager. On November 25th, council received a report on the operations of Casa Esperanza, and at that time, Casa reported that they were in negotiations regarding a merger with People Assisting the Homeless, or PATH. The negotiations have progressed since then, and a merger is imminent in which Casa will be merged into PATH. At this time, PATH would like some assurances that Casa's city grant agreements will be assigned to them pending completion of the merger. We currently have three grant agreements with Casa Esperanza, as well as one open purchase order. There is a community development block grant agreement with a $17,000 balance, a human services agreement with a balance of $9,750, and a grant that combines the winter shelter funding with the extra $125,000 that was approved for them for fiscal year 15. That has a balance of $63,155. And they have an open purchase order for police beds that's allowed by their CUP. They have $3,604 remaining on that. Casa Esperanza also has three recorded documents on their property that involves the city, a restricted-use covenant, which restricts the use of the property as a homeless shelter and related services for 60 years or until 2059. There's also a covenant condition and restrictions, which will be updated to match the latest conditional use permit, and an off-site parking license that guarantees 20 spaces for Casa Esperanza's parking at the property at 110 South Quarantina Street, which is a previous RDA property and now a successor agency property. The city attorney will review all three documents, and they'll be updated if needed prior to the merger. We've been assured that post-merger, Casa Esperanza will see no changes in their services. They're currently a 24-hour sobriety-based homeless shelter with 100 year-round beds and that expands to 200 beds during the winter. With the merger, PATH is able to provide technical expertise in grant writing, operations, and program management. Three of Casa's board members will join the PATH board, and the remaining board members will form a local advisory committee that may involve others in the community as necessary. At the November 25th council meeting, Casa described a financial strategy to strengthen their financial position. It involved refinancing their mortgage with the bank, applying to prior funders that had stopped funding them, applying to new funding sources, and increasing their billable bed night rate. Since November, they've successfully refinanced their mortgage at 4.5%, which is, has reduced their operating expenses. They've regained funding from several private foundations and successfully renegotiated their bed night rate with Cottage Hospital to pay for the full cost of the service delivery. They've also begun negotiations with county departments for the bed night rate. Their fiscal year 2016 budget is a status quo budget with a few exceptions. It will include a full-time, a full year of the managing director salary, who was hired mid-year this year, the reinstatement of security and winter shelter staffing levels that were reduced when they had their financial difficulties, an increase of certified nursing staff that's required by Cottage Hospital, the addition of an employment navigator that's funded by a grant from the county, and a 1.8% increase in their workers' compensation rate. Their 2016 budget also includes some revenue assumptions, and those include the continuation of the extra funding from the city of $125,000 and the extra funding from the county of $120,000. And it also includes an assumption of a service reimbursement increase from the county totaling $180,000. That's for the negotiated bed night rate. Casa's request for the extra $125,000 from the city will come to council with the outside organization requests. At this time, staff is recommending that council approve in concept the assignment of the three city agreements and the outstanding purchase order pending Casa's merger with PATH and subject to further assurances recommended by the city attorney. And at this time, I'd like to introduce Joe Tumbler, who has served as the volunteer interim executive director for the past eight months, Jessica Wishan, who's the managing director of Casa Esperanza, and Joel John Roberts, the chief executive officer of PATH. And they have a short presentation and then are available to answer any questions.
Thank you. Mr. Tumbler?
Honorable Mayor Pro-Tim Hart and city councilmembers, my name is Joe Tumbler. As, I would like to first thank you for your support in the past. Casa Esperanza is very, very appreciative. And also to thank Sue Gray and Deirdre Randolph, who have done a better report to you than I would have been able to do myself, and so my remarks are going to be very short. The merger with PATH, as we had talked to you about previously, is a logical extension that we uncovered as we were going through our financial restructuring. And we, Casa Esperanza, believe that this is decidedly in the best interests of both the community of Santa Barbara and of Casa Esperanza itself. PATH will make Casa much stronger than it would otherwise be, and it will be good for the Santa Barbara community. One of the understandings that we have with PATH is that Casa be self-funding on its own merit, and in exchange for that, that all funds raised in Santa Barbara will be used for Santa Barbara programs. That's a commitment that PATH is prepared to make, of course, to the community, and it then places the onus on Casa to raise funds to fill our budget gap. The key variable in our budget is the renegotiating our rates with the county, where we are expecting revenues to go from $475,000 to $683,000. That is consistent with what we've done with Cottage Hospital, who has graciously and generously stepped up to the plate to fund us fully for the services that we provide. So we will make a full presentation on the financial matters to you at the Finance Committee and then at a subsequent city council meeting, requesting that you continue the $125,000 of discretionary funding that you provided last year. And what I'd like to do now is introduce Joel Roberts, the CEO of PATH, to talk with you about what the implications are for the community and for Casa. And we're all prepared to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Roberts?
Mayor Pro-Tim and councilmembers, it's good to see you again. We're very excited about partnering and having Casa join the PATH family. PATH has been serving people who are homeless for 30 years throughout California. We currently have programs from San Diego up through San Luis Obispo. Let me just share with you two major priorities that we have. And one is to help people on the streets, not just to feed them and shelter them, but to actually help them get off the streets and move into apartments and find jobs. That's our priority. In the last two years, we have literally housed into apartments 4,200 people. There's been a big transition throughout the country on how to address homelessness. Almost every community in the country has been shifting and changing how they address homelessness. And it's basically been this transition, again, from food and shelter to actually permanently housing people. And the agencies that have difficulty doing that have either gone out of business or have merged into other agencies, and that's been going on around the country. And so we see this as kind of a natural partnership, where we start transitioning our approach into what people call Housing First, and that's actually getting people into permanent housing. We are committed to that. We have changed the way we do business from street outreach to transitional housing to permanent housing. That's our first priority. But the second priority that a lot of agencies sometimes forget is not just simply to help people, but to help the neighborhood or the community that they're in. And that's what we've been doing in the 22 communities that we work in. We make sure that we're not only housing people, but the neighborhoods that we're in actually benefit. And the way we interpret benefit is not simply housing people, but we interpret benefit as actually reducing the number of people that are living on the streets in our neighborhoods. And we've been committed to doing that in many, many communities, and actually have seen, and actually have a track record of actually reducing people who were on the streets, now being housed, and reducing the number of people on the streets in the neighborhood. We've put together a team, how do I say this? The larger you get, the easier it is to put together teams of experts. And again, this is something that's going on around the country, where agencies are merging together, joining forces, and bringing together a better capacity to manage organizations. And that's what we've done. So we literally have experts in mental health and substance abuse, and veterans, in fundraising, in working with cities or people that have come from cities or federal government, so that now we can actually provide the experience and guidance to work in different communities. And we've done that in many communities. That also allows us to raise more money. Local government alone cannot fund and address homelessness by yourselves. You need the county government, the state government, the federal government. You need private funding. You need foundations. You need the business community. And what we have done is tried to put together those types of resources. And typically, especially on the state and federal government and even the county level, they're not going to just throw money at the problem. They want to contract with organizations and agencies that have a track record, that use numerical outcome to show that if you invest money into us, we will actually have positive outcomes for you. So that's part of what we're able to do, is to, because of the 100 contractual relationships we have with county, state, and federal government, as well as contractual relationships with business improvement districts, we're able to be more competitive in terms of raising funds. So we're very excited about this relationship with Casa. One of our former board members, about 12 years ago, moved to Santa Barbara, he and his wife, and actually was the president of the board at Casa. So we've had this relationship with his organization for a long time, and it was a year ago when they approached us, where, you know, they had approached us before as well, but we felt like a year ago that this might be the time, because Casa's really kind of brought a positive relationship in the community and have really become financially stable, to where we can use that as a strong foundation to not only build the organization, but to actually seriously address homelessness in this city. So we're very excited about that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Roberts. Any questions? Councilmember Hotchkiss?
Roberts, good. Nice to see you again. Step back there if you would. You mentioned the importance of housing, but housing is really limited here. Is it possible also to use your housing resources elsewhere for people that are here and you're trying to help?
What do you mean by housing?
You said the intent was Housing First, so...
Yes.
And we don't have eligible housing here to any great degree. Can you therefore use your resources in the other areas where PATH operates to help our people here?
Yes. The short answer is yes.
That's a good answer.
You know, there are resources that, from the federal government, like the VA, we do that now in Santa Barbara on a limited basis, but we can expand that. We've, like in San Luis Obispo, they've expanded into housing assistance resources for veteran families. We do that throughout other cities. So there are ways to leverage other resources for different communities.
So it doesn't have to be solely within this community, where our resources are pretty limited?
Not, it doesn't have to at all. I mean, homelessness is not just a city problem. It's a regional problem.
And many of our folks come from elsewhere, stop here, end up at Casa, so it might be appropriate to do that. The second thing is that that neighborhood improved dramatically and quickly when two things happened. You, or Casa, adopted the sober model, and secondly, stopped serving free lunches at noon or in the middle of the day. You plan to continue those practices?
Yes. That is certainly a value of ours, is to make sure the neighborhood gets better. And those two examples you stated were the reasons why, and we would definitely continue that.
Right. And I want to tell you how appreciative people are there that that happened, and much more willing to support Casa, and they have, I think, since then. So thank you for continuing those, and congratulations to Casa for doing a better and better job.
Councilmember Murillo?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Can you describe how you would come into a new community and get to know it? You know, I know you have experience going into different cities and getting to know what's there. Councilmember Hotchkiss is correct. Maybe we aren't unique. Maybe, like you said, there's homelessness everywhere. We're a coastal city. People like to be where the...
The nation's spot, yes.
There's beach and good weather. So please, just let us know how you would get to know Santa Barbara.
It's board, staff, and supporters and donors. On the board part, it's obviously having board members from your community be part of our leadership. It's also developing an advisory board of people in the community here who know the needs and being part of our team and our family. And it's staff as well. We intentionally had a former staff member who went to UCSB, who knew this area, and we really encouraged Casa to hire her as a managing director, because we knew the importance of having people from the area be part of this effort. So it's staff and board, and then it's supporters. And that's where we are out in the community, meeting the business community, residents, the faith community, other agencies, elected officials, just to make sure they understand that our values fit your values and your needs are met through our programs.
Thank you. We have one speaker slipped, Mr. Widrow.
Thank you, Mayor Pro-Tim and councilmembers. I'm Tom Widrow, on behalf of CityWatch. Just want to speak out in favor of the merger between Casa Esperanza and PATH, but also wanted to echo what Councilmember Hotchkiss said about the value of sobriety. I know that's a different situation than it was before for Casa Esperanza, and I'm not sure CityWatch would be standing here today in favor of this if it weren't for the sober requirement. I was reading about Farmingham, Massachusetts, and the chief of police there said that the recent closure of a wet shelter, one that permitted use of alcohol, reduced crime in their downtown area by 27%. their downtown area by 27%. That includes crimes such as property destruction, breaking and entering, and car theft. So I just want to say, without sobriety, there is no chance for many people to go on the road to do other things like get permanent housing, I think you all recognize this, or much less a job. So once again, I remind myself, you know, in working with my father, who was head of East Bay Hospital for years and worked with people who struggle with addictions, that the key is sobriety and that life only can begin at that point. At least constructive life, the life that the rest of us would consider normal, doesn't begin until they're sober. And if we, as a community, are going to provide services, and I think councilmember Francisco mentioned at a recent meeting, we do provide generous services as a city, and it's not always recognized. But I do think that kind of tough love for those particular people also rewards the people in those shelters who are not under the influence of alcohol. Mothers, people who are divorced, who are struggling, down on their luck, people who have other life challenges, who don't then have to deal with all the things that come with sharing a shelter with someone who is under the influence of alcohol or drugs. So I appreciate time for that.
Thank you very much. Any other questions or comments? Councilmember White?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just in contrast to the conversation which we just went, which was so frustrating around our law enforcement efforts, and we invest more and more money in that program, and yet we still are not able to get up to where we want to be. And here's an instance where we see an institution which, when I came on board as a council member, was driving us absolutely nuts. And obviously, the law enforcement implications of that were huge, and it was just the morale around that question was very low. And so this is an instance where, thanks to a series of good moves, and obviously, I want to give real credit to Mr. Tumbler for stepping up. It's just as amazing, the work that you've done, to have one of our concerns. We see a real uptick and an improvement, and it just reverberates throughout our community. So thank you for that. It also reduces our need for law enforcement efforts on the other side of that as well. So this is a happy component of our issue about social concerns, and I certainly will be supporting this move for the merger.
And I want to express my thanks too to Mr. Roberts for coming up this way and spending the last couple of days up in Santa Barbara. Mr. Tumbler's great work, really turning the board in a positive direction. And Ms. Wischan, our UCSB graduate, to come back to Santa Barbara to help us out with the facility and the programs. And one thing that reminded me when we were talking earlier about the programs that CASA runs is that you do screening for local residents, that you provide services only to those local residents, so that there's not the situation where folks are coming from out of town, landing in Santa Barbara, and showing up on your doorstep and expecting services. And I think that's an important clarification of their mission and what they're trying to do. This is a great opportunity to bring the resources and the management skills and the experience and the economies of scale that PATH provides to Santa Barbara, and I think that's going to make all the collaborative efforts. We have a lot of different nonprofits working in this space, and just that knowledge base, that experience is going to be very valuable in this community. So we appreciate you being here and appreciate your work.
Any other questions or comments? Councilmember Maria?
Thank you. I'd like to ask the city attorney. It says here in the recommendation, "Subject to further assurances as recommended by the city attorney." But while he thinks about that, I really did want to hearken back to the history of when CASA Esperanza was founded. Just this last weekend, we celebrated the retirement of Rob Pearson of the Housing Authority, and he's been there in this issue for so long. And years ago, when I was a reporter, I was undercover and went into CASA Esperanza when it first opened because there were allegations of people, you know, it was chaotic in there, and kind of it was. But the homeless population is difficult to deal with, and I just remember what it was like to find that location and to really put this together. And it was difficult, but it was important work, and this service and this facility is so important. And I'm thinking about all the cast of characters that have come and gone, working there, helping the people who've got sober, the people who are housed now. Jewel, I can name, you know, some people pulling some homeless people out of the air because I'm connected to the recovery community. So I just wanted to bring that historical perspective, that it has not been easy, and everyone has really worked hard in good faith to make this happen. And there have been difficult times, and I really am glad too to see we're coming into a clearing of sorts. Mr. Klon?
Mayor Hart, councilmember Maria. The staff and I did what I would call a survey-level review of the various documents to see what would need to be assigned and what assurances would need to be provided to make those assignments meaningful and binding on path. There may be other issues that come up. So the kicker that you referred to in the language is simply to make sure that I am charged with identifying any other assurances that the city may need. The ones we're specifically concerned with, Ms. Gray mentioned, the CCNRs were not updated when the conditional use permit was updated. We need to cover that, and that'll be a fairly major work effort.
Thank you. I'd like to move the staff recommendation. Mr. Mayor?
Okay. Is there a second?
A second.
We have a couple of comments there too, I see. Also, just a point of clarification, I think the event was to celebrate Mr. Pearson. He's not retiring. He's probably watching on television right now. Councilmember White?
Thank you. I'm recalling that there was an agreement at one point for some of the parking spaces to be at the D-SAL plant. Not true? Okay, no, I'm seeing that. All right, so that's somewhere nearby, but it isn't the D-SAL. Obviously, that might get to be a busy place here in the next...
And councilmember Hotchkiss?
I just want to be mindful of the city attorney's comments about further perusal of this to make sure that it's right. So this is sort of three-quarters there.
I think the motion is to approve it in concept, so I think we have that covered. Any other questions, comments? Councilmember Rouse?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just had a question, as, you know, we are clearly in favor of the motion, but about the county's piece and all this, because we're talking about a piece of financing that comes from, I would hope, a very substantial partner in the county. And it says that we've begun negotiations, but that's still pending? Is that, did I read that correctly?
Mr. Tumbler? Thank you.
Councilman Rouse, we are in discussions with the county as we speak. You know the budget cycle has moved well along, and I will have something more to report to you in a week or two's time. The principal contract that remains unresolved is the Alcohol Drug Mental Health Services contract, which is the significant increase in contribution to our budget. So those conversations are underway, and I have nothing more to say to add than that.
Well, anything we can do gently to assist in those negotiations with our relationships with members of the board of supervisors, we'd happy to help in any way. Because it clearly is, you are a resource, you are a provider, you need to be compensated for that work, and really, the county is sort of in the driver's seat for that decision.
So we provide a service to this community, and we would be very grateful for any support that you could give us.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All in favor of the motion? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Miss Stain, matter of carries. Council and staff communications? Anything from staff? And then councilmember committee assignment reports. Councilmember Maria?
Thank you very much. I attended the library board yesterday, and the board reviewed its budget and programming for the new year. They will be asking for us to fund a new children's library, librarian, rather, since we're expanding our children's library. And also, they've asked for, the board has asked for a report on the recent decision that we gave the library director more authority to control what happens on the grounds there and related to street people. I mentioned the retirement of Rob Pearson. Yes, we celebrated his work. I don't know, maybe he's happy to be retiring, and we're happy for him.
Not retiring.
Well, he's not retiring.
He's not retiring. That's the, we celebrated his work, not his retirement. Rumors of his retirement are premature.
Well, I'm red-faced. What can I say?
Okay.
They told me he was retiring. Okay. Well, I'm celebrating him in that case. The Affordable Housing Task Force met last week, and we had a spirited conversation. Things got kind of political. Usually it doesn't at that task force. We're just plodding along, you know, there's some affordable housing projects here and there. Mainly, we were talking about how to replace the RDA funding mechanism, and there are some laws out there that have people kind of hot and bothered. I will continue to report on that. And then what I forgot to report last week was the group CAZ brought Dolores Huerta to Santa Barbara, and she was a fabulous, progressive speaker for civil rights, and I don't know how I forgot her. I'm still high from her speech. Thank you.
You're welcome. Councilmember Hotchkiss?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem. The mayor, myself, you, and councilman Francisco attended the 233rd anniversary of the founding of Santa Barbara, replete with that cannon that scares the bejesus out of everybody and the great old uniforms from the 19th century, actually 18th century, so. And then yesterday, I followed up because I was jealous of what Mr. White got to do and took a tour of Gibraltar Dam. And for some reason, I had this image in mind of this little dam out. It's really imposing and very impressive to see how it works, and hopefully, it will, again, play an important part in our water. Right now, it's sort of on stasis, I guess. But it was good to see some of the real structure that keeps and has kept Santa Barbara going for years. And that was put in place when this was a tiny, relatively tiny town in the early 1900s. The vision they had and the engineering that went into it is just really impressive stuff. So it's an important, vital asset to this community.
Councilmember White?
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. I attended the Bren School Masters Project final presentations, and, let's see, that was last Friday. And I did not get to attend the, there was one session that was on climate change having to do with Santa Barbara. I did not get to attend that, but I did get to attend sessions on the implications of low water levels in Lake Mead, as well as discussion of water rates, particularly vis a vis Long Beach. But, and more importantly than that, it's this wonderful town gown relationship that really is blossoming with the Bren School. There, a bunch of their work is toward applied science, is taking real-world problems and having our best and brightest students grapple with them under the coaching of a great faculty team. So it was inspiring to see that there. These are, it really gives me more hope for the future, these real problem-solving and creative thinking going on there, and brought to us in town. So it was a wonderful presentation.
Councilmember Rouse?
Yes, I met with Harbor Director Scott Redeman and Operation Director Mick Cramman about the undeclared war between us and the Coast Guard and Long Beach, and happy to report that Mr. Cramman has it well under control, brought all parties into bear, and seems like we have some resolution. So kudos to the Harbor Department for carrying forward on that.
And as I mentioned at the beginning of the meeting about Sexual Awareness Month, I attended the screening of the Hunting Grounds movie out at UCSB in Campbell Hall, and it was frankly shocking to learn about the epidemic on college campuses of rape, the 100,000 young women raped annually. It really, I did not have any sense of that at all, and to see this incredibly moving movie really made an impact on me. And I think it is something that people need to see themselves and understand and become engaged in. So I'm pleased that Chief Sanchez is interested in making that happen with other cooperative partners in the community at City College as well. So with that, we'll adjourn the meeting till Monday, May 4th at 1:30 PM for a site visit at 1215 East Cota Street. We have a special budget council meeting this Thursday at, I don't know what time, but 3 o'clock. Great. Thank you very much.